How you doing people? We're back at the GHA again to ask more questions. If you've watched the last footage, we were illegally apprehended by the Glasgow City Council Special Police Force. If you'd like to know what happened to us, I'm going to explain to you right now. What actually happened, folks, was they're illegally apprehended, taken to Heron Street Police Station, and put themselves for six hours, and then let back out at half eight with a pink slip. And this is when it's a photocopy, but this is a pink slip. Oh, they've not talked to any GHA office. Oh, they've not talked to any fiscal, you'd be going to court. We knew it was a fake court, folks, and we didn't attend that fake court. All they wanted to do was take our megaphone and mask office, because the GHA didn't want us outside. We hadn't been committing any offence, folks. And then, we're out there, then the police have categorically said, "Oh, you don't have any warrants out, and you're acting lawfully", as we were at the social work department. So we're now back at the GHA again today, to once again to ask them some questions. The question we would like to ask is the reason why I'm not taking my mother to court for £4,000 rent arrears? What I can tell you, folks, is they can't take her to court. It's in their interest not to take her to court, folks. Now, in 2013, folks, I caught the GHA in collusion with the Glasgow City Council, except for having their rent paid, while my mother and my severely disabled sister have been abused by the Glasgow City Council. Now, you might be asking to yourself, "But why is this what's happening?" What I'm going to tell you, folks, is who's involved. There's this many people, folks. Everyone's here. NHS, Department of Health and pensions, Glasgow City Council, the GHA too, who's behind me, obviously. Yes, East Renfrishire council, primary and secondary, this East Renfrishire council, your school of expenses. But obviously, there's many, folks, that can't turn him into court at once. Farnley Bank Medical Centre, Mr Doctor Quigley. Now, I'm going to reveal everything to you, folks, over the course of the next 10 minutes before, I'll ask this GHA to come out and answer my questions. I have a sister, folks, and her name is Michelle, and she's 19 years of age. This is a child who's had her life destroyed, folks, by unconsenting vaccinations by a family doctor by the name of Mr Doctor Quigley, who resides at the Farnley Bank Medical Centre. Now, what actually happened back in 1995 and 1998, folks, Mr Quigley had arranged for two rain check sessions at Farnley Bank Medical Centre for my mother to take around my sister when she was a baby. But that wasn't just what happened, folks. What he actually done was passed the child to a nurse for going rain checking out of the vision of my mother, and injected multiple doses of mercury-infested vaccinations into the child, and then handed the child back, and then they proceeded, folks, to hide it within the whole system, folks. Yes, Glasgow City Council then proceeded to hide her in the primary school and nursery school of Clamodrick Primary School. Then, the mother had made a place in the first of East Renfrishire council authority at the Farnley Bank Primary School. Now, East Renfrishire council, I don't understand why you didn't just refuse to take the child in and to take part in this hide. You had the chance to get out of it, but for some reason you decided to take part in it by knowingly accepting the child. Now, I'm pretty much sure that Glasgow City Council had approached you back in 2003, I'm very much sure. And asked you, "Can you hide this child? Is your sister in any concern for this child?" After all, Glasgow City Council gave you the assurances, didn't they? The utmost assurances that this child would never be revealed in the whole of Glasgow. Because after all, the NHS had already took part, they got killed just a year before, which was going to get her teeth extracted, and the hospital didn't say anything to the mother. And they took more than, "Good momma, mate, her teeth were taken out". What that was for, folks, was to lessen the chance that the child would be retired, to go back to your home for the same treatment again. They didn't want that. So what happened was, after that, over the years, the mother joined concern to Mr Doctor Quigley regarding a child, because a child was showing signs that something wasn't right. The mother was very concerned, but Mr Quigley continued to lie and hide and lie and lie and lie. And over the years, the school's never said anything, nothing, think. And then, in 2006, she went to Wood Farm High School. That's when the truth, the frauds became apparent, as with her physical condition. And she weighs less than five stone, severe body frailty, and doesn't understand all the potential. She went to Wood Farm High School. They said, "I think the court school reports suggest that she's at university, she can speak fluent French, she's perfect at PE, she's very fit, nothing longer". Hmm, very strange. But what is it until 2011, folks, that we actually found out what Mr Quigley had done regarding multiple vaccination without the consent of the parents? Now, Mr Quigley, it says on your website, I would like to make a note to you, Mr Quigley. It clearly states that you won't do any care or treatment without the informed consent of the parents. You don't have the signatures, Mr Quigley, because you never asked. And more importantly as well, Mr Quigley, it clearly states on your website once again that it's the parents' responsibilities for the child's health. Exactly, Mr Quigley. We didn't want these vaccinations, Mr Quigley. I'm pretty much sure you know that. But then again, you'd like to know the reason, what the connection is with the GHA. So I'm going to explain that to you, folks. Once after that, the 2011 meeting, the father requested an assessment being done at the NHS. Now, we knew that that assessment was going to be false, because they'd hidden her back in 2001, 2002, at York Health Hospital, so we knew. But soon enough, folks, five months' assessment, over four visits, and it was nothing but lies, nothing at all, nothing but lies. That's fine, no problem. But during that time, folks, that I found out in 2013, the Glasgow City Council were collaborating with the Department of Health and pensions to set a benefit product. Yes, they said we're telling Blackpool that it had a point teeth for this child. To deal with hard benefit under special circumstances, unknown to the family, set the benefit product. What they couldn't do, folks, they couldn't go to court for a point teeth, obviously. That wasn't the agenda. The agenda was to take the claim pack, the disability living allowance claim pack to Glasgow. After all, they're relying on the mother not knowing anything about disability living allowance, which she doesn't, but they're relying on that. So what happened next, folks, was they decided to phone up my mother and ask two questions over the phone, and then sent her out a benefit fraud, folks. It's nothing more, nothing less than an employment support allowance add-on, back to front, and calling it disability living allowance, folks. But it's nothing more than a... As soon as I seen it around, that's a NESE attachment, and that you've got to go to ATOS. I don't understand why they're talking about disability living allowance, East Renfrishire council, because as far as I'm concerned, where these school reports, East Renfrishire council, she went to the university and there's nothing longer. Well, almost, I would like to say, East Renfrishire council, "Why did you phone the mother a year after she's left school and ask her if she's working? I know why you found it, I know why you phoned. Because you phoned to see if she entitled to what has happened, and just to let you know, East Renfrishire council, yes, we do, we know it all, we're supposed to do. We have the evidence, I'm pretty much sure. Glasgow City Council can't save you now, just the same as the Glasgow City Council can't save the Glasgow Housing Association, who obviously are relying on protection by the police. Police can't touch us now, we're going to go off to arrest us. Obviously, we're not breaking the law, we're actually defending the law, we're not a public fucker. I'm only wanting my questions answered, folks. But I'll get back to the benefit fraud again. 2012, September, they sent her out to Wood Farm. Now, remember, this is when she had her child in the property, severely disabled child. And it says, "The term of liability, 20, 40 pounds". Now, that's an employment support add-on, but they're saying it's disability living allowance, it's called Blackpool. Funny enough, folks, I'd put Blackpool in well, I mean, that. I actually phoned Blackpool up, believe it or not. I've got a talk with the claim pack centre, Department of Health and pensions in Glasgow, and I phoned Blackpool and asked them. I said, "Why have you had this claim pack for a year? Why have you not dealt with it? There's obviously no information. Why haven't you sent it back?" And the assistant at Blackpool told me, "We're not dealing with this. It's not as it's dealing with Glasgow. It's dealing with this person's benefit under special circumstances". All that covertly done behind the mother's back, hmm. So they were never ever going to recognise this child. Because she during the assessment, folks, this is calling out to law. While you're at a T-Max assessment, assessing your child, you must be on income support, the mother must be on income support. That's law. Guess what, folks? They didn't do it. They just told my mother, "It's only temporary, it's okay, once it's sorted out, no problem, we'll get that done". They've no intention of doing it, folks. That's really the problem. So they're broken the law, they're right away, folks. Then, the benefit fraud, for seven months, we decided, "That's not law". We refused, 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 because we knew what they're doing. So we went to go and see about a gardening shop lawyer, didn't we, folks? The gardening shop lawyer named Carol Davis, who practices at New Law in the city centre. Now, I thought I left her here, but I'd like to be down with you, so. Well, once I've done these kinds of lawyers, before I continue, we stop from lawyers being speaking to us in the whole of Glasgow, the whole of the country. Now, someone had got a card from a friend, they knew the abuse was taking place, and said, "Please may I be able to help you? If you'd like to get her phone, Carol Davis of New Law Scotland, folks. Gardening shop application for Michelle, which is obviously my sister. Once again, they're trying to get her into the system for a disability. They're trying to put on NESE, which is a benefit fraud, folks, you know? So, it says here, "Follow the recent telephone conversation, arrange a write-off date, advise a remit through by the local authority". What you've got to understand, folks, is that she went to the same people, folks, that's been hiding the child since 1997. Do you honestly think you're going to get gardening shop? She's not going to act lawfully. But, no one's been told her that, and no one's been told her that when they phoned her up as soon as she sent out to say that she's going to Glasgow City Council for the MHO. She should have went outside Glasgow for the assessment, and nowhere, and not in Glasgow, in the best interest in this case that she's not recognised. Now, what happened next, folks, is that it says here, "I've been advised an MHO allocation, I was brought up to Jacqueline Jenkins. It's an MHO officer that's been put out to assist. We knew she wasn't going to be assisted, but we had to gather the evidence for this, and which we did, so Jacqueline Jenkins came out. Blah, 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 over an hour, and away. Now, for seven months, the Department of Health and pensions sat back and done nothing to assist. They certainly tried to facilitate benefit fraud and vaccine damage cover-up, and they also don't want to pay the sixteen and a half years' back payments of care allowance and disability living allowance, folks. They don't want to pay that. Now, I was just going to say, I just wanted me to re-point out to you, folks. There wasn't any disability living allowance back when she was three years old. They still didn't say anything, folks, you know? So, remit through by Jacqueline Jenkins, psychiatrists come out, they're nothing more than social workers, folks. Jacqueline Jenkins, as you know, they could say they had a lawyer, but they didn't have a lawyer. She was Glasgow City Council's lawyer, she worked for them. She gets all her work for gardening shop off the Glasgow City Council. She was in their back pocket, folks, acting against the mother. So after that, so for seven months and up to June of 2013, that's when the social work became involved. The Department of Health and pensions decided to tell the Glasgow City Council, "I'm sorry, but they're not accepting the benefit fraud. What can we do? Give us it, we'll deal with it", and they sent their social work department out, folks. Now, what you've got to understand is, for that seven months, don't you think if that was the real benefit for the child? Don't you think that even after four to eight weeks, and even less than that, you could go to court? And they could force the social work department, the mother's not acting in the best interest of her daughter? They're denying her the money, you're refusing the money for her? I would like to read this statement out to you, so. If I'm trying to find this statement, is Employment Support Alliance turned round back to fraud because it says disability on it? They were trying to accept the money, they're trying not to disability living allowance for a month for the daughter? My mother, you right away, as soon as she seen it, it wasn't. As soon as I seen it, I went, "I know exactly what that is". So, for seven months, they sat back, done nothing. And then they decided it wasn't getting anywhere, and then they passed it to the corrupt Labour Administrator Glasgow City Council, who sent their social workers to the family home, and sent a train to work them. I'd like to read that letter out to you, folks, even if I read second, see if I can find it. What it actually says is that if they got to a pension by the Department of Health and pensions that you're got, that Michelle should be on disability living allowance, that's a benefit fraud. Once again, I knew what's a benefit fraud. I thought they'd left him a copy of it when I was at a meeting with my mother down at the Boys' Deal Centre, when they were verbally attacking Michelle. Michelle doesn't understand anything whatsoever. They sat for 25 minutes and verbally attacked that child, trying to enforce a benefit fraud on her. Now, my sister doesn't understand money, folks. She will never work, folks. She will never drive a car. She will never have a job. She will never have a child. She will never experience love. She'll never spend money. She doesn't understand that these school reports from the school of excellence of the East Renfrishire Council's Wood Farm High School suggest that she should be at university. That's during her time, East Renfrishire council, don't worry about that. Glasgow City council can't save you now. You had your chance not to take part, you could have refused the order of place request. 2003, at Farnley Bank Primary, but you didn't, did you? You decided any reason why, because Glasgow City council told you that she's in her own wee world. And it's all good behaviour, good behaviour, but she's in her own wee world. That's the reason why she's not disruptive, that's what it told you, wasn't it? It's okay, she's not disruptive, she won't cause any problems or anything, just like a sitter in a chair for four years. It's important that we give the illusion that she attended high school. There's many questions I want to ask you, East Renfrishire council, relating to these school reports. Unfortunately, I can't get a lawyer to ask these questions, so I may be forced to do it myself, obviously. Until I get a lawyer to act for us, unfortunately, as you're aware. The friends who you took back, the corrupt Labour administration, Glasgow City council, have stopped us from accessing law. Now, let's get back to the Glasgow Housing Association, folks, just before we do. So the social work department came out to the house for, what, six, seven, eight months repeatedly? And I sent them away. I told them, "Excuse me, I knew what we're doing, trying to enforce a benefit fraud through harassment on the mother and the child. I had decided to tell them repeatedly to take us to court, and that you have no power, and that you can't take us anywhere beyond a new court of law. You have no chance of going to a court of law. Take us to court". So for eight months, folks, they couldn't do it. And don't you think if that was a proper benefit, folks, and that was disability living allowance? The mother's on income support, and she's on disability living allowance. Don't you think if you believe what the judge say, the judge would like to know, wouldn't he? Why do you refuse this benefit? What happened, judge, if it's a correct benefit, they submit that to a judge, and he said, "Judge, this is a proper benefit for the child. The mother's not acting in the best interest of the child. They're denying her money, therefore, they're putting in harm, because she's not getting the money". That's what they would do, but they didn't, because they couldn't, because they knew it was benefit fraud, it was to cover up the vaccine damage that we got to have done. Now, my sister's 19 years of age. I don't know if she's suffering for the family, don't know, but what I can tell you is it's catastrophic, folks. And they're trying to take an employment support allowance on it. It didn't work, folks. I have already have a video of the Paul Care Center. Yes, Linda, I would do that. I sure do. Remember when you said, "If you don't accept this benefit, the frauds you would benefit, if we're going to accept it, then you'll have to go into Jobseekers Employment Support Alliance"? And I said, "I said, 'Do you have a disabled daughter in the house, so?'" I did notify you, that, Linda, didn't I? But you were speechless, and you knew, but we'll move on from that. Now, we're at the Glasgow City Housing Association here. My mother's nearly £4,000 rent arrears, and they can't take her to court, folks. The reason why? Because they're involved in it. In May 2013, folks, I found out. With my mother, I accompanied her to the Glasgow Housing Association, and I had a wee, I just found out a wee collusion between them and the Glasgow City Council. But to make sure that as long as, no matter what was happening at the household, and the mother wasn't a benefit, that they still get paid their rent. Yeah, there was an Employment Support Alliance on the system, when my mother was in Jobseekers and be sanctioned. That was to make sure when the claim stopped, as long as they get their money. Then we found out, I said, "Go hold on a minute, we should really be getting a rent review statement through now, to let us know that your claim stopped". It didn't, it didn't come through. And that's when I went up, didn't I? Sat down with my mother, under the guise of Mr Stephen Custer, a representative. After all, there's no one in Glasgow for my mother. There's no one at all designed that way by the corrupt Glasgow City council. To protect her medical tactician, but you've also got to protect the NHS, haven't you? Also got to protect East Renfrishire council, who you gave the assurances in 2003. Yes, yes, can't protect now, East Renfrishire may. So, at the Glasgow City Housing Association, I asked them. "What benefit do you have when your assistant represents May 2013, that's when they visited? Housing benefit payment", and she said it was Employment Support Alliance, and she was very nervous. Or she couldn't wait to take a card out of the system, folks, and slip right out the door. And then came Lorraine Cupwood, didn't she? And Lorraine said, "It's not as I'm not speaking to you, I'm not speaking to you. It's not as it deals with you. It's Slob Bridgestay". Guess what, Lorraine? "I've not received any documents with Slob Bridgestay. All I've got is everything from you". So, 2013, folks, that's the rent stopped. They're trying to access the right to get to court through a eviction. Lorraine Cupwood won't do that. So she sat back while the rent spiralled, folks. £1,000, while at the same time with a corrupt gardening shop lawyer, pursuing to act for us. Now, it wasn't till near October 2013, though the rent's still not been paid, remember, still spiralling, and I've turned around and I spoke to Lorraine Cupwood on the phone. And she says to me, "Is Jobseekers here, my mother? Hmm, that's a severely disabled daughter in the house, Lorraine". That's she once again ignoring that she has a daughter. In that case, then, why didn't we apply the bedroom tax in 2013? Now, you said we applied that, because after all, the gardeners are going to do, let's just say, if the daughter's disabled or not, she's not in the system, she's not in a benefit. Therefore, my mother has an extra bedroom. Now, that clearly qualifies for the bedroom tax, doesn't it? No, if we didn't send it, and we know why we didn't send it. So while that was happening, folks, the event was still spiralling. And then during the time of the so-called Court for Gardening Shop, folks, that we knew that it was going to exist, my mother received a phone call from a debt collection agency. They've sold my mother for £2,600 debt. Not my mother's debt, just what they do, my mother, she's not on a benefit. She'd want to on a benefit. And the agent, he said, "Oh, I can't help, I can't, obviously follow this up, you'll have to send this back to the GHA". See, GHA, you're meant to send the mother to court for rent arrears. That's the procedure. The judge would like to know the reason why you've left it late. Well, obviously, to the mother, "Why are you not claiming a benefit? What is the problem here?". Now, this is before she was carrying that, folks. But they didn't want to do that, so they sent it back. And then in September, folks, of 2013, the corrupt gardening shop lawyer, yes, Carol Davis of New Law in Glasgow, had phoned the mother. "Oh, the gardening shop, eh, maybe, you might not get your gardening shop because of large debt you've amassed". What that actually, folks, is the Glasgow City Housing Association told Glasgow City council, "If you can't take the mother to court for rent arrears, how are you going to get a rent, because she's not on a benefit"? We're asking the gardeners, we're asking the lawyer who's in the back pockets to fight the mother, and he's signing a disjournment reform that means that they've been getting a rent, even though the mother's not on a benefit. Carol Davis phoned, didn't she? "I knew right away where the phone call, I did see it, my mother, that's the housing panicking", trying to. The gardening shop didn't exist, folks, it's never existed. They kept her out of the system, and their lawyer was acting against the family, by saying that the MHO officer was usually acting as a social worker, folks. So once again, from once the social work came, we sent them away. "Take us to court, take us to court", because they knew they were trying to cut a benefit fraud on her, to protect everyone who's protecting Mr Doctor Quigley, who vaccinated the child and destroyed her life, yes, Mr Quigley, we do know, but you're for another time, so don't worry. Then, in November, you could remember, folks, you could go to court. The questions I'm going to be asking the GHA today very shortly, folks, is I'm going to ask Lorraine Cupwood to go, and ask the Eastern Line with Jobseekers Alliance. Not the mother was meant to go, "Well, she had a severely disabled daughter in the property, and why she allowed that for seven months to spiral without having the help of the welfare officer"? After all, you've seen the wee books, haven't you, folks? Get what you're entitled to, folks. Unfortunately, folks, that didn't affect my mother. She wasn't to get this. See, you've got to understand, 2011, until that meeting, my sister was destined to go to Jobseekers. That would have meant a successful house, folks. But Mr Quigley, that was never going to happen. Just to let you know, it's never going to happen. You know that much too well, don't you, sir? But, we're here now, Glasgow City Housing Association, to ask them the reason why they haven't taken my mother to court. Now, it's more than a year now, folks, that's a year that they haven't taken her to court for rent arrears. Lorraine, I would just like to say, "Why did you send a joiner with it to drill the door? She allowed Glasgow City council corrupt, that's right, police force, and two social workers", yes, "Leslie Anderson and Jacqueline Jenkins", folks, Jacqueline Jenkins is a social worker, folks. She's not a medical health officer acting for the mother. The mother was, the lawyer was acting with the doctor, and was acting with the social work department to attack the mother. They had to wait till the mother wasn't in the property, and then they sent a joiner to drill the door, and the police burst in and said, "We have a warrant, we have a warrant. Where is that warrant? Show me that warrant. I have every fake document under the sun in my hand here, all for this case, but I don't have a warrant". You are aware yourselves, you're really meant to leave a copy of the warrant. Leslie Anderson, Jacqueline Jenkins, you've got to show the warrant at the door. You're just nothing but felicitating benefit fraud and vaccine damage cover-up. Now, you know that, you were notified that at the door when you took her. Now, what I would like to know is, where is the warrant? What's the name of the sheriff in the warrant? What's the reason for taking the child, because after all, she's not in a benefit? Who's kept her out? Who's doing benefit fraud, trying to get an employment support allowance, when she knew the logic, when physically destroyed? So where's the warrant? Show me the warrant. Not just have a police person in here saying, "We've got a warrant, you know it", we didn't ask them for the warrant, folks, because we know they couldn't go to court. Just the same as the Glasgow City Housing Association can't take the mother to court. Where do they go for GHA, folks? That's what we're here to ask today. They're taking part, protecting a doctor, protecting everyone else. Then they phoned Glasgow City council. Send the police out to illegally after the hand, if you've watched the second footage, you'll see that. Illegally after the hand, take it to Heron Police. Police mission, released at half past eight with a pink slip, folks. Hold on a minute. I've been mentioned a pound court, I've seen the court bus for the rest of the prisoners, mainstream court. It's not for you, staff, to tell us not to go there to go. It's a top to each a fiscal. You can't arrest somebody for stuff that happened and you don't know. After all, what did the policeman say? You were done a couple of weeks ago. Excuse me, he doesn't even know, because no one phoned him. GHA put the shutters down, this, we weren't being threatened. I think intimidating, is the mask intimidating? It's an anti-corruption mask. It's a statement to the world, folks. I've got a megaphone, how can I be intimidating? But it is intimidating, isn't it? Because I'm exposing them for what they're doing to our family. Yes, corrupt Labour Administrator Glasgow City council, who have been overseeing this since 1997, to protect a doctor. Everything I say is backed up with statement. I wouldn't make statements I couldn't prove, of course. So, we're going to ask the GHA, folks, who in 2013 covertly had to wait until me and my mother wasn't at the property, relying the father been in the property and not been able to recognise who they were. And that's true enough, but they started to drill the door. Lorraine Cupwood and the GHA sent a joiner down to drill the door. The reason why they sent a joiner down, folks, is because the police couldn't kick the door in, because there's no warrant. She's not in the system, she doesn't exist, because they were leaving no options to go. They had to take the door, they didn't take the door, folks. We went through here with the, can't get a lawyer, the corrupt Glasgow City council, Labour, they stopped us from getting a lawyer. So, what we're going to do, is I'm going to ask Lorraine Cupwood, and I'm going to ask the GHA again, why they're not taking my mother to court for £4,000 rent arrears. It's about three and a half grand, folks, right? You want to see that in your statement, in the whole United Party, to your council? You're going to see that without it taken to court. What actually happened was, folks, when I stopped the housing benefit, Glasgow City council told, the GHA, "It's okay, don't worry, the mother has to feed her child", the same child that the Glasgow Housing Association was told, it was the same as East Renfrishire council, the NHS, Paul Care Centre, it's Mr Quigley, who was it calling, the governor? Then your welfare officer. I hope no malice to that person, you know? I couldn't hold, folks, for who it works for, but he couldn't help us, okay? So, your information, Lorraine, that the welfare officer said that it was Jobseekers Alliance is very much untrue. And I think we know it's very untrue as well, because you had a severely disabled daughter. But you sat back for all those months, for seven months? And you're not bothered with the rent, you're not, are you? Because the Glasgow City council told you, "Don't worry, the mother went back down for Jobseekers Alliance. She's got to feed her, she's got to feed her daughter. She's not going to let her daughter go hungry, so don't worry about it. She'll be on Jobseekers Employment Support Alliance, and you'll get your rent again, so don't worry about it". That's fraud, folks. My mother, neither, said, and said, "Neither can work, because she's looking after her severely vaccine-damaged child, who's in all of Glasgow's ignorance". So I told her to sit tight. Then the GHA started to get panicked, even. The Department of Health and pensions centre for the Glasgow City council's social work department, they sent a letter out. "Oh, they believe that the sales should be received of disability living allowance", well, it's a benefit fraud, obviously. It's Employment Support Alliance turned round to include disability living allowance. That's what me holding an article and calling it an answer, do you believe it's an answer, because I said it's an answer? Of course you wouldn't, it's an article. So we know what it is. So, we're here now, today, that's been six months now, folks, since the GHA drilled the door. Now, I would like to show you a document, folks, don't you think that if they'd been to a real court of law, folks? Right? Don't you think if they'd been to a real court of law? I have a document here, that's a hate, which has been typed. That's a serious issue, impersonating court documents, folks. Everything I've got here is all fraud, right? And it says that you state you have guardianship of your daughter, but this is a child that attended mainstream high school with perfect results. She meant to be unique, not having received any guardianship, is that what you said, East Renfrishire council? I've got a statement here, East Renfrishire council, with Mr Quigley. It confirms. But that's for now, okay, we'll leave that for now. So we're going to ask the Glasgow City Housing Association, folks, the reason why they drilled the door, To allow Glasgow City Council, corrupt Glasgow City Council Labour Administration Special Police Force to come and abduct a child that's not in the system. And obviously without a warrant for the social work department. You know as well as I do, if the social work department have got a warrant, which we know they couldn't go for, is the police stand to the side, and they let the social work present the warrant at the door. And not totally present the warrant to the cell, because they were going to remove the shell. Now, hmm, let me think for a bit, but they didn't do that. The police didn't stand, the police bards didn't. Yeah, they're better biggest policemen, didn't you, for intimidation purposes? So they didn't ask you for the warrant, because they're not bothering someone with intelligence for asking for one. Because you couldn't go anywhere in a real court of law. Just the same as the Glasgow City Housing Association can't take my mother to court for court. Three and a half thousand to four thousand pound renter years is not even a threat to my mother. Lorraine, why haven't you been down two days after you drilled the door? For my sister, my vaccine damaged sister to be abducted, who's not in the system and not recognised, and not on a pension benefit? Who we were fighting for our rights? Why have you not been down to my mother to say, "Oh, the state now own your daughter now", which means is that you're going to have to claim job seekers alliance? Eh, because you don't have a daughter anymore? Why have you not been down? Why have you sent a letter? Sent nonsense to us? And obviously the latest letter, I would just like, the latest letter that you just, eh, I would just like to advise you, does have the flammity statements against my character. That's for another time, Lorraine, and the Glasgow City Housing Association. Don't worry about that, that's for another time, I will bring that forward. But for now, we're going to ask the Glasgow City Housing Association, the GHA, and that's all. We're going to ask Lorraine Cupid, the reason why she didn't assist the mother in November, in May 2013, after I caught and get the rent. Now, I advise the GHA then, do the right thing. Take the mother to court, so we can get to court, so we can produce our evidence. They didn't do it, folks. That's perverting the course of justice, isn't it, now? And supporting benefit fraud. And to pretend, why are you pretending, a doctor, you don't know? You're tarnishing your good GHA name, for protecting a medical practitioner. We do know, and we know we can't get a lawyer. So we're going to be here all the time, asking the same questions, until news come out and answering harder, more importantly. We're going to ask very shortly for a renter year statement. Super three and a half grand, isn't it? People want to know, why have you not taken the mother to court? That's been more than a year now, your mother's not been a benefit. That's, eh, our rent spiralling, we're not giving a damn about that. Don't you think, folks, you know as well as I do, folks? I know, I know it all, no problem. So, we're going to ask, and we're going to see exactly, as we can get a dressing answered then. Now, we're by making appointments now, folks. My mother's acted wobbly. Don't you think it's bad to find out after seventeen years what a medical practitioner has done to your daughter? And didn't tell you anything, and everybody had it? Don't you think that's disgusting? And then now they don't even want her to have a daughter? They don't even want to recognise this person? We don't know what's wrong there. But let me make you, let me make this clear to you, folks, and to the public. She's catastrophic disability, disabled, folks, neurologically and physically. Like she attended high school with perfect results, the school of excellence of the Woodford High School. Use it for another time. But we're going again, we're going to hear just now, I'm going to ask Lorraine Cupid to come out. I'm not going into the office, I'm not committing a offence, I'm on a public footpath that I've already had conversation with staff by police yesterday, at the Roystein Centre, the child abductors, who asked them to walk in, they're, they asked the policeman, they are, they, folks, believe it or not, to walk into the Roystein, and ask Jacqueline Jenkins, who was impersonating, who was impersonating an NHS officer, when she was really a social worker attacking the mother. Now, surely time of removal. Jacqueline Jenkins heard the door opening. Yes, Jacqueline, you did, didn't you? And you started to panic, didn't you? "Oh, there's someone coming up, I don't know who it is, I don't know who it is." That's not the action, there's someone that's got a warrant behind them, folks, and they've got a warrant to remove a child. Of course not. But, once again, that's happened now, she's been six months away now, ten months, and we don't know where she is. You know? So, soon as they drilled the door, I get a gardening shit letter here, and storming the street. We don't speak anyway, but it's part of the housing, having been down to see my mother and see her. It's not only your child now, you don't have a child anymore. Why, well, you should be on job seekers alliance now. But, but job seekers, when she had a disabled daughter? Lorraine, why was it job seekers? Because you were told by the Glasgow City Council, who you're in bed with, not to recognise that she even had a child now, I mean, disabled. So why didn't you have a Belgian tat? These are questions you're going to have to answer me. I've got people on Facebook, I've got people on Twitter, yes, my Twitter account, who are very interested to know the answer to these questions. Now, I'm going to be asking these questions very shortly to you, Lorraine. Doesn't matter if you don't come out, when you're not spying, if you don't come out and answer my questions wobbly. After all, if you haven't done anything, and you're, you've acted within the law, and you haven't committed any criminal offences, you're more than happy to come out and answer my questions. I'm not making any threats to you, or any of your organisation. I'm only asking questions because I can't get a lawyer to ask them. Now, I'm going to come in, I'm going to ask very shortly, and I'm hoping that you'll do the right thing. And I asked you, I did warn you in 2013, didn't I? I did warn you, you're going to get your housing benefit. I told you to do the right thing and take the mother to court. No, but you dug deep, didn't you, because you were told, you said, "Don't worry about it, they can't get lawyers." Just drill the door. You said, "Can't get lawyers to get her daughter back, so don't worry about it." And you sent a joiner to do it, didn't you, Lorraine? Rather than assist the mother, to help the mother to get the money, to feed her child, and to have the child recognise you within the system, what would mean you would get your housing benefit? And everything's fine, you didn't. So I'll call that seven months, from May 2013 to November, I'll call that the starvation process, because you sat back heartily. And so did yourself, Glasgow City Council, corrupt Labour Administrative Glasgow Social Work Department, for a mother and a severely disabled child to be the household. With no money, nothing. Nothing at all. But unfortunately for you, GHA, there was people about who knows exactly what the mother is going through, and who were assisting to help her. But you didn't like that, did you? You started to panic, and you asked the corrupt gardening shit lawyer, Carol Davis, Glasgow City Council, told them, "Are you, I can just see you, I can see it." You said to the Glasgow Housing Association, "This bitch can get a control, that's more than £2,000." What are we going to do? What are we going to do? Hey, you knew that yourself. What can we do, Glasgow City Council, we're not getting a rent, she's not going on job seekers. We can't take her to court. And the Glasgow City Council said, "It's okay, Carol Davis, you give a wee phone call to the mother, and tell her that." The non-existent gardening shit, the losing gardening shit. You might not get that, because the renter years, that's her debt, she's got to sign the discretionary. Well, it didn't work, did it, Glasgow City Council? It didn't work. So you sent her to a debt, debt, then the fake lawyer, Carol Davis, and it didn't work. But we attended a fake court, folks. In October 2013, a wee room set up in Glasgow City Council, and the sheriff, eh, the Glasgow City Court, a wee room. They, they told them it's fake. I even had the so-called safeguard lawyer, who was sent by the corrupt court. They tried to have me for arrest of my mother's, tried to set us up for assault. Well, it didn't work, did it? So, after that, it wasn't long after that, that I came to the GHA office. Just about a week before she was abducted. Eh, and I spoke to Lorraine Cupid, and I told her. I said, "Lorraine, my mother's not signing for discretionary, she's signing for nothing. You'll have to take her to court. Now, I have advised her not to speak to you, she's within her rights. You have to exercise eviction proceedings and take us to a real court of law, where we can present our evidence to a judge, or to a sheriff, who's going to listen to us." "Oh, no, you can't do that." But you stormed out that room, didn't you? And you didn't look back. That tells me that you knew what was going to happen, and that you had no choice to do what you do. So what did Glasgow City Council tell you? Well, the mother's going to do, they've stopped, their daughter's been away, and she'll do anything to have her daughter back. They've drilled the door, didn't you? Allowed the staff by police and the social work department without a warrant, because they couldn't go to court, to take the child, she's nineteen years of age. She was asked by the father, "Do you want to go with these people?" "No." And you still took her. "Social work department, I want to see a copy of the warrant, and more importantly, I want to see a copy of the risk assessments that a judge or a sheriff, who you're applying for the removal, would request." Because it's quite a traumatic thing to take a person with neurological problems away from their family home, or their safe home. Now, I need to hear those risk assessments, and I can tell you one thing right now, you don't have risk assessments. I can also tell you that you don't have a warrant either. You can't take a warrant. I have every other document fake, but a warrant? Good judge or sheriff, even going to put on it? I imagine so. No one's going to give you a warrant. You only got in contact with the family unwarranted social work intervention, because the benefit fraud wasn't being accepted. Then you decided to get involved, didn't you? And the consulate harassed the family. Now, I've got what's here is, is a, is a toast office, eh, application form, that the benefits agency sent. Now, one minute in 2012, they're saying, eh, "If I'm speaking to you, so I'm speaking to myself", that's the deception, folks. That's the dece... Oh, we recognise that she's incapable of understanding anything, and that we need to speak to you, but the benefit they're attaching that deceptive statement to is Employment Support Alliance, that's the benefit fraud. But in all fairness, as far as the social work is concerned, folks, there's nothing wrong there, and we need to speak to her, we need to get to speak to her. So what's the change? One minute the park, what council are saying that, "You have to understand that she's incapable of understa... of understanding any of her questions, eh, so we'll just speak to you", but it's Employment Support Alliance, it's doing it, add to us, folks. Punch, get that, can you? So, staff, eh, social work department, eh, during 2013 sent a letter. It's been, it's been sent to us by the Parkmark council that Michelle should be on disability living alliance. Now, that's them calling ESA fraud, disability living alliance. So they've sent them out to harass the family, couldn't take it to court, they've decided to house and drill the door. Now, I would like to ask, Lorraine, why is it not job seekers now? If she had one, she hasn't had a daughter for six months, a severely disabled daughter, who we were fighting for our rights? For what rights that she had left? After all, life had been taken just about, and the family's rights had been abused. And Mr Quigley continued to abuse them, and everyone else that took part. So, I would like to ask Lorraine Cupid, the reason why they're not taking my mother to court for £4,000 renter years. They're involved in it, folks, they've been told not to take us to court, we can't reach a court of law, a real court of law. So that's the reason why they can't evict my mother for £4,000 renter years, you know? So I'm going to ask now, folks, I've just brought you up to date, just a wee bit on it. The fact that she'd not been near the door, right, after, after five months, six months after drilling the door, tells you, don't be worried, you know, that this so-called gardening shit document that's meant to be for a court, oh, yes, eh, we now have state ownership of the child now. You don't own her. But hold on a minute. We're trying to apply for gardening shit ourselves, but it never existed, did it? It's all an illusion. You can't go for gardening shit. No, this is silly. We've got to go to court, we've got to present our evidence, and the judge will want to hear our side of it. But they're going to apply for gardening shit of a child that's perfect, that was seemingly the perfect school results. In high school, perfect school results, nothing wrong with physically, nothing wrong with mentally. Funny enough, Mr Quigley, even in 2013, after the NHS, my mother took my sister to the NHS hospital, a few years ago, the gardener waiter, she very concerned, and they turned around and he says, "It's okay, she's just dehydrated, give her some more water, she's fine." That's very insulting, isn't it? And then in the two marks, the fake two marks report, NHS again, remember? 2001, 2002, take their teeth out hiding, not mentioning. And then further, that visit, they're saying it's dehydration, that tells you they were hiding, folks, okay? They were hiding the orders of Mr Doctor Quigley, the Tony Wong Medical Center. Then, two marks report, once again, demeaning, the waiter should be saying that she's very difficult to eat, and that that's the reason why she's skinny. That's very insulting to me, sir. I said, "I'd like to let people know, that while my sister was in the property, my sister ate well, and she ate good. But she, because of the damage to her body, has been ravaged. She'll never put weight on, she will always stay under five stone. She's very brittle, folks, see when she walks, folks? You can't hear the floorboards. My mother was in a room the other day, and she pulled out a bag of coins. These coins were given to Michelle when she was younger, like maybe six, seven, eight. She's never spent money, she doesn't know what money is, folks, she doesn't know what anything is. But these people had it, that's the reason why, and then they've came to kidnap her. They've came, they've came to kidnap her to protect everyone, and we can't get... Do you think we'd have let my sister sit wherever she is? We don't know where she is, folks. We can't get a lawyer to ask for the warrant. We told to stop getting lawyers, that's the reason why the GHA drilled the door. Wasn't it, Lorraine? Because you were told the family were powerless. So all we've got left, folks, is our voice, and I'm going to exercise that voice. Our voice to the right to free speech, and I will use that. And you won't snuff us out, and you can see your corrupt friend, the Glasgow City Council, is sending a special police force. They can't snuff us out, and they can't stop us. There's a right to free law, right to free speech, haven't we? So, let's proceed, folks, I've given you a wee background of it, and I'm going to proceed, and I'm going to ask Lorraine Cupid, or ask anyone else to come and answer my questions, and I would like a copy of the, of the up-to-date renter year statement that should be present, okay? So, unfortunately, the police had took our last megaphone, with no charges in the hat, and decided to hold it, that was designed, that was designed, that way, you know, eh, let's just take the megaphone off him, and then we'll, with no charges, you know? Fake courts, fake courts, folks, you can't script it, you know? But we'll get our megaphone back, but for now, this'll do the trick. I'm sure this'll answer the question, won't it, folks? So let's see, let's see if Lorraine Cupid gets out, eh? Lorraine Cupid. Please, please, please. Send the last of my children, please. Why did you draw the door? So why did you stop, pray, please? And the social work department to remove the high school student? Why in dog, can the mother have a disabled child, and we choose 2013? Why didn't you take the mother to court for nearly £4,000 renter years? Could you please come out, please? And bring a renter year statement out, I need a renter year statement, so you can see how much it is now. Thank you. So what we're going to ask, Lorraine Cupid, or any member of staff to come out, listen to the up-to-date renter year statement, and hand it to me. I don't want to enter the property, I don't want to think that, eh, it's alarming. I'm not intimidating them, I'm only asking questions that a lawyer, they can't get a lawyer to ask, you know? Not to intimidate or threaten, folks, as you're looking at last footage. I just want my question answered, why you drilled the door, telling my sister to be abducted, without a warrant? How did you do it? What, what? It's not, it's not for you to drill the door. To, to, to abduct children, is it? I'd say, but who, but who are you drilling the door for, Lorraine? Because as far as you were concerned, in May 2013, and June 2013, when I had that conversation with you, as far as you were concerned, she didn't have a child, or she didn't have a disabled child, or she didn't have a child. So, who are you drilling the door for? Because you can't go one way, and then not, and then recognise the next way. You can't do that. Can't you much sooner you do know that, don't you? So I want to see you, once again, and we'll keep coming back, Lorraine. We'll keep coming back to your GHA office. Now, Lorraine, you do have the power, Lorraine, now. You do have the power to use the lawyers within the GHA, to turn around and say, "Look, enough is enough here." We can't have these people consistently outside our office, calling us child abductors, fraud and embezzlers, and knowingly accepting fraudulent housing benefit payments that you weren't entitled to. Now, I'll make that statement repeatedly, and to use this side for yourself, to say to your friends, the corrupt Glasgow City Council, who are you protecting as well as everyone else? Let, let's get this done now. Return the child to the mother, and let it take its course. Because Glasgow City Council can't protect you anymore. That's done, they can't protect you, so only us, okay? Now, as you can see, staff by police have appeared, and I'm going to have a wee look at them just now on camera. Okay? Hello, officer. Can you help us? Yes, indeed, yes, indeed, you can.
I'll be the chat with you on camera, though.
No, no, the camera's through a protection officer. No, you're not committing any offence. No, we're allowed to. Okay, you're welcome. Yes, indeed.